That was you.
All right, perfect. We will call the October 20th.
Yeah.
Meeting of the planning board to order. I think we have an echo on the front screen here.
The speaker on the TV is on the left one.
Oh, okay. The only unmuted person on Teams is me. Can I mute this and?
Okay, we'll try that again. Working through some technical issues. Bear with us just a moment. All right, I think that works. Perfect. Called October 20th, 2025 meeting of the planning board to order. Since we have members participating online and in person, we'll do a roll call just for participants and all of the votes tonight will be taken by roll call as well. So, starting with Jared Germa.
Here, present, thank you.
Bill Quinn. Joe Sheridan.
Here.
Angela Ippolito.
Here, online.
Thank you, and Ted Dooley, present as well. All right, so our agenda, we have approval of past minutes, which we will defer to next meeting, as we don't have minutes prepared yet. Up next is position 24-19 for 15 Manson Road, requesting a site plan special permit for construction of an attached ADU comprising of 899 square feet. So, anyone here to speak on behalf of the applicant?
Yeah, my name's, how you doing to the board? My name's John Andrews from JFA Design Group. And actually, you said 15 Mason Road. I think it's supposed to be 15 Manson Street.
Manson Street, okay.
That's okay. Okay, so what we have is an ADU, and it's 899 square feet in the front of the home. If you can look on the site plan, you can see where this is located. Okay, so it's a one-story. It has two bedrooms, bath, two baths. If you can look on sheet EX1, that's the existing home, and then the next sheet A1 is what it shows what it looks like. It falls within the, all the setback requirements, falls within lot coverage, and height requirements. What we are adding to this, though, that's not on your site plan, is a driveway. We're going to add a separate driveway in curb cut to the unit. I have that plan with me here if you want me to, I can hand it out to you if you want to take.
Yeah, it would be helpful. Chris, have you had a chance to review this new filing? Okay.
No, I'm wondering how Angela will be able to view it.
I can see it as well. I have it pulled up on my screen.
Angela, it's not in your site packet. It's something we're just seeing for the first time now.
He's handing out plans that show driveway entrance, so we will figure out how to share that with you.
Can you just confirm the address? I think we have a couple, I'm seeing a couple of different addresses on the packet.
It's number 15 Manson Street.
Okay.
So, there's a misspelling on the drawings that it's Mason Street. I know we tend to refer to Manson Road often, but that's a different street.
It's a different street.
Manson Road, there's Manson.
It should be Manson Street.
Yeah, this is Manson Street, not Mason Street.
Can you, Chris, can you just confirm what the public advertising said about this? I just want to make sure we notified the public.
It's actually on the plot plan, is correct, up in the corner.
While we look into that, if you want to talk, discuss the driveway, continue with your presentation, excuse me.
Right, so there'll be a driveway located there. It'll be 12 feet wide. Be it the new ADU addition, if you're looking at the front of the house, is of course on the right side, and that driveway will be along the property line, which is the fence, all the way up to the corner of the building, right where the, just before, if you're looking at the floor plan, just before the bedroom. It's going to be a single car driveway.
Is it a separate driveway or is connected?
It's a separate driveway.
Oh, it's coming in from the rear.
Did you?
So, it's coming in from, what's the name of that street back there?
No, it's coming in from Manson Street.
It's coming in from Manson Street.
It just is on the corner of the plot.
Do you, you said you had that drawing with you?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I should have passed that down.
Oh, there's only one copy, okay.
Okay, so the legal notices were sent out to Manson Road.
Manson Road, okay.
And it seems like there's some new materials today anyway.
So... Just let me think about this. So, I think since there was a discrepancy in the address for the notification of the hearing, we'll have to continue that, we'll have to, I mean, we can't even open this. It's not a valid hearing without public notification, so we'll have to punt this to our November meeting.
Yep.
Angela, Joe, does that?
Yeah, I think so.
No, you're right. You're absolutely right, Ted, and I can make a motion to continue this to November.
What's the date of November meeting?
Second Monday.
Chris, do you have that date?
Yes, hold on a second.
So, it gets...
November 10th.
November 10th. So, I think what we, what we'll do is, since we don't have the right notification requirements, we can't open a public hearing tonight. What we can do is we'll re-advertise this, we'll ensure that the addresses are correct. I would just double-check through the, your application package, because I think there are a couple of different references to other streets in here. But in the meantime, if you make those changes, update this with the site package. Two weeks out is usually our deadline for updates to the, to the package for any changes to a, to a site plan application. So, your driveway changes here is something that we really shouldn't have been viewing for the first time tonight anyway. So, apologize for the delay on this, but we'll make sure to hear you in November, and like I said, if you have any updates to the application, just make sure they're all in finalized by.
Two weeks prior.
Two weeks prior, which is Monday.
Yeah, so that would be the 27th.
27th of October.
So, the 27th?
Yep.
Yep, that's a deadline for application packages, and then the date of the meeting is the 10th.
Oh, and the date of the meeting is actually the?
November 10th.
November 10th, on Monday.
And I think we have a pretty streamlined agenda for that meeting, so it shouldn't be.
Can I ask a question? As far as after, you know, if everything's all set and it does get its approval, is site plan review a lot like with the ZVA, that you have to wait 20 days?
Yes.
Anybody to contest it before you can file for a building permit?
That's my understanding with all of our land use decisions. Angela, does that align with your experience?
Yes. It's asked, it usually coordinates with, since, yeah, you don't have to go to zoning for this, I'm assuming.
No.
Since you're, okay, so this would be the only permit that you need. When you'd need, if you had to go to zoning, you'd have the same, the same thing, but yeah, it'd be 20 days from the day that you get your approval from us.
Yeah, it's 20 days from the filing of when the decision hits the town clerk's office.
Right, and then after that, you can file for a building permit as well?
Yep.
Okay.
See you in November.
Is there anything else missing here that we might discuss?
Make a note of the landscaping. I mean, not that you don't have to have a new landscaping plan, but if anything's changing, and because you're adding this extra driveway, I'd be, and it looks like you have, you know, ample open space. That's not so much my concern is if you're taking down any trees or there's anything like that. So, we'll need to know if there's any kind of the, you know, what's existing, if anything's changing in that regard.
Yeah, to Angela's point, site plan will usually require for residential addition, and new construction will require a landscaping plan. If there's no landscaping changing, that's fine. I would just do that, ask for a waiver in writing and notate whatever your reasons for that waiver are, but also with the addition of the driveway, assuming it's pervious. I'm assuming it's impervious.
Impervious.
I would just update your calculations here to show what the lot coverage would be with reflecting the new driveway.
So, is that a standard form that you guys have, just keeping the landscaping the same? We're just changing the driveway, or is it something that we handwrite out?
You would handwrite that out for whatever waiver request you would like. In this case, it would be a landscape waiver.
Okay.
And whatever the reasonings you would have for that would be. And again, I would update the open space calculation.
Yeah, I would change the calculations, sure.
Is there a recent one that we could refer them to, just as an example?
There's a lot of recent ones. Manson, well, Manson Road, Zero Manson Road.
Yeah.
Subdivision there was a new construction that had, they had a full landscape plan, but you can see what the full landscape plan would be.
Yeah, because I think what we're changing here is minimal, because all the landscape now is just done on the front of the existing home.
Yep.
So, we were adding this addition here. It's minimal.
If you're not taking down trees, not changing.
There's no trees there to be taken down or anything. It's a pretty clear lot.
You can notate that.
Yep.
No shrubs or bushes coming in.
You can notate that in a narrative. If you are going to be planning to have any plantings around, I don't know if there's new condensers, any utilities, anything like that, I would show that on a, on a plan.
Okay.
But again, it's, it's just, from my review, it was just a landscape plan that was missing, and then updated calculations on this, and then just fixing the street reference on a couple of the, I think it says Mason Street on some of them, but.
Right, and that narrative you're talking about, as far as the landscaping, again, it can just be handwritten out, then signed by us, and then included in the permit package?
Yep, and it's just a waiver request if that's the decision you choose.
Yeah, because we're really not going to change any landscape. There's nothing really there to change or add, actually.
I would just suggest maybe taking a look at that other one, just to see how it shows it relative to the other sites, and also how it shows, you know, what's changing and what's not, just with the building.
Oh, okay.
You did like a nice job of showing how everything was relative.
Right.
I'm sure when you come back, there might be questions about that, so.
Yeah, but you'll see.
I can email that example also. I think earlier today, it was mentioned that if you're adding any lighting.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Yeah, stereo lighting.
We would want to see details for that, as well as if there are distances to any nearby buildings.
Yeah, move this plan should have distance from the building, the nearest, from your butters' buildings. The lot line and a butters' buildings to the nearest point on your building.
I think the only lighting that we'll go on here is for the front entry, at the front door.
That's fine. We just need to see where the lighting is going to be, and if you have the type of lighting you're proposing using. If you have it, that's helpful to show the fixture. It has to be dark sky compliant, so just showcasing what the fixture is going to be.
Okay.
So, that's it.
There's a couple of things that are missing between your elevations and your plans. So, the rear door that's coming off of the bedroom.
Yep.
You're showing stairs in elevation and no stairs in plan. Should add those in. On the side elevation. Check your foundation layout. Based on the drawing, there's some foundation that's not shown.
Yeah, some of it is over, is stepped over, you know, so it's a foot off the foundation, but it doesn't have a foundation wall there.
So, the bay that's on the bedroom, you're showing foundation under the bay, on both bays, on the front elevation, but on the side elevation.
Oh, I see.
Only shown under the front bay, not the side bay.
Okay. What about drainage? From what just water runoff, or just showing a simple gutter system here?
Yeah, if that's all you're doing, that's fine for a single, for a single-family residential construction, that's.
That's all we're going to show. So, we'll show those gutters facing to the yard, backyard.
Great.
Okay.
So, the driveway, is it the bottom of a hill?
And, yeah, there's a slight, it's basically up there. Starts to level out a grade, but yeah, it's more on the lower slope.
And did we say that was pervious or impervious?
I'd be sure to notate that if it's pervious or impervious.
We can get that.
And how it impacts the open space coverage.
Yeah.
Yep.
I can show that on the calculation.
And the locusts plan, I think, is supposed to have some more information about the neighbors, the locations of the houses.
Yep.
To like what extent, to the two side neighbors or?
Yep, any of butters.
Any butters, yeah.
Yeah, any butters need to have distance from their, their dwelling to.
Their dwelling to the, to the property line?
Your law line, yep.
Oh, okay. How far the house is away from that?
Yep, and then you already have your distance.
Their names as well, yeah.
And names, yes, sorry.
And do we have, are we getting staff comments on these? So, DPW for the new street layout?
Well, yeah, so now that they're adding the driveway, we will definitely get DPW and.
There's no foam poles there, there's no fire hydrants, and is there curb?
Yeah, we'll, we will get their comments.
Once that's updated, that goes to CONCOM, because I think it's outside of my understanding.
Okay.
CONCOM, engineer.
So, hello, hello. Hi, so I'm Mary Vic Tjungson. I'm the owner of the property, and my husband Jim Tjungson is, is also there. So, if we actually just make a note on all of the drawings that it's not Manson, it's not Mason Street, because that's a typo, and just insert the N and countersign it, doesn't it make this meeting a valid meeting?
No, because we have to do public notice in the Lynn item and online to the public, and send a butters, anyone within 300 yards has to get a note in the postal service. So, if we did this on Manson Road, that would probably have some impact on which a butters received notice and the accuracy of the Lynn item thing. I know it's pretty close, but it's, still want to make sure we button everything up. Whatever decision, whatever decision you guys get, we want to make sure you can, it doesn't get challenged for any procedural issues.
And I did notice that there is a 15 Manson Road, because I was Googling, and all of a sudden, I'm like, this house is nowhere to be found, and then I looked over and saw Mason Street. That brought me to Manson Street, and strangely, it took me into Lynn, renamed the street. That's wild, but I guess I can't trust Google.
You're saying it's Mason Street and Lynn, and then it gets in Swambska?
No, it's, it's a different street in Lynn. It's, now I can't remember, but have you, you seen this when you?
When we just moved here, yeah, so we were looking for a package, and it was in Mason Street. Where's Mason Street in Swambska? There's no Mason Street.
Yeah.
It's in Lynn, so.
Yeah, well, and this one is, if you, if you Google your address, your correct address, when you come in from the sky, they've got the street labeled as another street, and they're calling it out as being in Lynn, not in Swambska. So, your taxes just went down.
Our deed clearly states it's 15 Manson Street, and in the assessor's office of Swambska, it is 15 Manson Street.
Okay, awesome.
No problem. We'll make sure, you know, as long as we get everything on the timeline, we'll make sure this is rectified, so we can hear you in November.
John, I was mentioning that foundation thing.
Yep.
Check how you want. The foundation plan is not showing those bays. The elevation, the front elevation is aside, isn't. There's, the step to the front is also missing on the drawing, so.
Yeah, so I was showing, yeah, and then the two steps to the side. I wanted the, the base to overhang, but I'll take a look at it again.
Yeah, if, if that's your intent, get the lines off the drawing. I just don't want them pouring you wrong foundation for you.
And before we let you go, I'd just make sure to mention, if there's any updates to utilities, if there's any changes to condensers, compressors, any outdoor utilities, make sure it's shown on the plan, and then we require screening around any of those, so just notate what screening is going to be, if it's a fence, a shrubbery, anything to that nature.
Yeah, that's a good thing to bring up, definitely.
So.
All right.
All right, we'll see you next month. Thank you. All right, so we can proceed now to petition 24-11, 491 Humphrey Street, by Xena Glickberg, care of Ken Schutzer. I have a conflict on this, as a butter within 299.9 yards probably. Nonetheless, a conflict. So, I will cede chairmanship for this petition over to you, Joe.
Great. Ken, do you just want to give us an overview of what's going on?
It would be my pleasure. Approximately a year ago, actually a year ago, September, we were before the board, and we were granted a site plan special permit, which we requested be phased. And the phasing was precipitated, I believe, for two reasons. One was for financing equity, so we would be able to go back to finish it by providing the lender that we had in fact invested the money, and therefore the value to them, and their equity increased. The second phasing was because of FEMA regulations with regard to our proximity to a, not that, you'd think of us as being in a flood zone, but the flood maps are what they are. So, the suggestion at that point, and just sort of refreshing your memory from Steve Cummings, was if you phase it, and the overall project is less than 50% of the original value of the property, you can do it that way. So, that's, and that's actually in the decision. It's pretty well spelled out. So, that, that required that we come back before you to inform you where we were in this project. I had spoken with the chair at that time, just trying to get some idea exactly what the board was, was looking for, and with the board, what, what Mr. Dooley indicated he was looking for, and this is obviously the determination of the board, is he wanted a narrative of, you know, what, what's going on and what we've accomplished, and, and why there have been some delays and things such as that. And for that reason, I had asked Xena, who is a principal, to provide an explanation of the delay. She had done that, and I believe that's in your package.
Yep.
So, I mean, I'm sure she's glad to read it into the record, but if you have it, it is really based upon a couple of factors, one of which is the original drawings, and I know that those of you who are familiar with the original drawings, there were, there were some technical errors, so we had to go and redo all the drawings over again, and we had to rehire a, a new architect to do that, and that delayed the project to some degree. The second was, this was originally going to be heated by gas, and national grid was not necessarily as helpful as we thought, and the project got stalled, and then we, it was all converted. So, this is an entirely electric heated building now. There's no gas. Am I correct? Correct me if I'm incorrect. The third was, was something that nobody could have contemplated, and fortunately, Slava, who was here with me this evening, spent a couple of months in the hospital. He had, without getting into his hospitalization, he was off the project for a couple of months. But those of you, I'm not sure if any of you have gone in, but I know the building inspector has, and has signed off on the first three units. So, we're making, we're making significant progress, and our expectation will be is that this project will be buttoned up and ready to go in the, in the next year. What still has to be done, though, is there's a bump out that was contemplated in the original set of plans. That hasn't yet been, has been done, but the, the plans, the footprint, the exterior, and I'll get into a couple of minor modifications, is what was originally presented. So, there's no material changes. There were some minor modifications that were more precipitated by some information on our original set of drawings, which turned out to be incorrect. Yeah, we have a, this I can, if. Yeah, you can, yeah, maybe, yeah, you can go up. Why don't you take this up with you? You know, you'll always like the before and after. This is the, yeah, I think. Okay, and this is, okay. We also, I have provided you, but these are the larger versions of the before and after. So, what you see is the project, and the renderings, it's obviously, has been fully painted, has been fully finished, but this will be, this is the finished project. Any of you, and I'm sure you all drive by it probably every day, have seen what has transpired. Isn't exactly what the original drawings, no, there are two minor modifications. One, Slava, can you explain about the window? Because that, that came up.
Angela, can you see what we're looking at?
Yeah, if we want, if you want us to move around in a different way, so she can see it.
Oh, now it is visible. And Ken, is there a place on the plans where we can see the changes?
There should be, yeah.
Yeah.
So, this place right here, this was wider here. I'm not explaining it in your language, but it's, it became narrower because of the height, of the building code of the height of this.
Because when we tried to build it, the integration between old building and the new construction, we had to draw the rails down, and that became slower than originally drawn in the plans, and.
So, basically, the beam that is shown on these two pillars grew.
Yes.
And then we had to remove a couple of windows from the original rendering?
So, did this windows here. We had double windows right here. We took them out, because when we physically stood in the rooms, in the bedroom, it would not make any sense, because there was practically no walls to put any furniture or beds or anything like that.
So, that's the only changes we've made?
The, so this is the rendering of the, now, there's, there's quite a few discrepancies on this from what is built. So, one thing is the fact that there's trim on the windows, which were on the original proposals, and they're lacking on the building. It's, it's basically a nail fin window with shingles right up to it. And then the other thing is that the proportions and sizes of the windows on the, on the rendering don't match the house, or the building. Currently, that, the front windows that are to the left of the porch are shorter, probably counterheight windows. So, you have small windows on the first floor, and then larger windows on the second floor. So, there's a number of things, and then the columns got eliminated, and there's sort of a horizontal window.
This, actually, this column doesn't exist. There is a wide trim board.
Yeah.
This doesn't exist.
Yeah, and it's. Yeah, and it's a pretty awkward as a facade, just in the sense it isn't matching what was presented to us. But it's also sort of nebulous in its style. You've got the double windows and the doors behind a window opening instead of treating it more like a porch. So it was a little surprising to see it. And it's surprising to see the as-built rendered in a way that doesn't actually match as it was built. So.
This we just got today.
Yeah.
So we didn't know that we need the rendering. So I sent this out for someone that I know to draw it for me, basically the drawings there.
Yeah, but the as-built, if this is supposed to be as-built, it should actually be as it is built, not as it was designed, if there's a discrepancy. So I'm just pointing that out so it's on the record.
Your point is well taken. It's just, we just got this today. We're trying to get everything together for you.
Yeah. No, but I just wanted to say, if this is being presented and we're talking about this image, it doesn't actually match what was.
The image that we need to provide, I guess before we wrap this up, will be an actual image that mirrors what the whole looks.
Correct, correct. And you'll see that the windows.
The windows are full here?
No, no, here, these two windows here are smaller than the windows above. And here they're shown larger than the windows above. It's a small thing, but it is something that shows that any documentation should match what.
I fully agree.
Explanation for that. I understand it's not exactly on this picture. It is.
You know, I think without short circuiting the process at all, the actual as-built will be after it's as-built rendering. We were trying to get you something and apparently there was a discrepancy in that particular rendering.
No, I just want to point it out.
Oh, no, 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 I'm glad you did.
It's recorded because of the nature of the.
I would.
And we tried, we really, really tried to keep to what you guys, how you imagined the house to be built because we still kind of went with the style that you suggested. So by doing that, I mean, those windows were much more expensive for me because they had grids. And I asked if we could do, like if we can eliminate grids, but they suggested that we do grids. So we even did that.
So right here on the front room, we moved to the bedroom. Because we have integration of old structure and the new structure, the floors are actually much higher. So you would be violating the code how far you can go from the floors.
So you had to shrink those, yeah. So it's just getting it recorded, I think, is important there.
We can retro this.
No, I think what they're saying is, is this isn't perfect. Ultimately, what is built will mirror what the rendering will be that we'll be providing when we're finishing.
But we passed rough, so we're ready to close the walls. The installation is done. So we made pretty big progress from when we started, even though we had to stumble upon.
A lot of setbacks, yeah. You're looking good. You feel it?
You know, I told him the same thing.
Yeah, good, yeah.
A lot of adjustments, you know, because he's a hand-on contractor. Now that he has a disability, he can't work with a lot of tools. So he has to get more teams going everywhere. But that's okay. We'll throw. But our biggest setback was even not in his situation in the hospital, is the gas company. That kept saying, okay, we need a couple more weeks, couple more weeks. And it took two months to just let us know that there's a.
Culvert.
Culvert, that's not right.
Is that right?
Culvert on the road so that we can go under it. And if we do, it's going to cost us a million dollars, which is not worth building. So. So we went, we already bought the systems. We have them in the building, but now we have to go over with all electric.
So my understanding is that that culvert would have been shown on the original plans when you bought the site. So if I'm looking at those original plans, I can see a culvert there. So, you know, I imagine you should have been able to, you know, get this information well ahead of time. I just, I don't understand why.
Well, the source would be, the source would be ever-source, not, that's not something a contractor would necessarily know.
Right, so correct. We did know this, but there was gas in the house. So we thought that we have a gas in the house. We will do the six systems, we'll do navians. We already had gas.
All we have to do is just increase the pipe size.
When you're increasing pipe size, you not necessarily have to dig the street. In this case, you do.
Right. And you're also in flood zone, which changes the, you know, which is a huge part about any kind of underground work in a flood zone, which is why there are so many restrictions around working in flood zones. But in any event, I understand that, you know, I understand that this, obviously, these things caused a lot of delays. I'm just looking at this picture you have up on the screen and I'm really not understanding that rectangular window in the front of the building, that sort of opening. And I understand you're talking about code, but when we first talked about this entryway, I mean, it was like a railing. It was a railing. So it looks like this whole area that's white. When you're looking at the building, you can't even see the tops of those windows on the inside. Makes that little inside hallway, I don't know really what it does. I'm not as good at, you know, being, describing those faces as Jer might be, for example. But beyond my understanding about the forty-two inches, then you have to have the right height. Being, why is it blocked, why does it look like that? And why isn't it a railing? And, you know, all you need was a railing that's forty-two inches high, not an entire wall closing that in. That makes no sense to me.
As we were doing this rough inspection, we spoke to the inspector and we actually came up with a plan to reduce this section, this section here, to lower it down and do the rating.
If you've insisted, insisted on it, we would do that. I'm sorry? If you insisted on lowering that section, we could do a railing there, but that's not the original plan. We didn't have a railing there in the original plan.
I guess I'm looking at a plan where it shows the railing. Maybe that was the first iteration. I have, it's in the package here, you know, prior to, back in July or September, I think, the plans that we looked at had railings there, just like your back door does.
Yeah, the opening actually was wider than the original plans. But I do agree, I don't like it myself. It's just too narrow.
I'm, I think that it's aesthetically not working on the front, but I'm also thinking there's value in lowering that for the unit. Because I'm assuming these are condos.
Yes.
Very dark.
So I would think that those front areas, to get more light in there, it would benefit.
Would you allow if you put regular PVC railings here and integrate them into this pillar? Because that's what I would personally want, to make an opening and bring more light in.
One of the things you could consider doing would be aligning the top of a solid wall with the window sill of the windows in the back and then having a small rail on top of that. So go with a column instead of the way this is picture framed.
Portion of the rail, right?
Right. So you don't.
So lower it.
Lower the wall and then bring it, put a rail on top of the solid wall so you have light coming through.
PVC, right? PVC on top of, so cut this and then put PVC on top.
But I would align it with your window sill on the windows behind, yeah. So you've got a nice plane running around that space. And then put a lighter rail so people, so you're getting light back to that. And then the other thing that I would recommend would be, as you're taking this apart, right now it's picture framed, which doesn't really have any sort of, the house itself or the building itself has architectural reference to things. I would suggest doing, it wouldn't even have to be a radical departure. You could do square, but lightening it so it isn't so heavy and reads like a, sort of reads like a window.
Too much thinner.
Yeah. Yeah.
Drop it down to like you said.
Yeah. And then you can get that height with a light rail and sort of hold it back towards the deck. And you'll get a lot more light in and it will also balance the front of that.
Yeah, the second portion we suggested.
Good.
Only the second.
But I think that'll make sense of that elevation, because that elevation isn't making as much sense as it should now.
So I guess, you know, could we get a plan that just shows these minor changes? Like what's the easiest way to, it sounds like you guys came to us to get approval for a couple of minor changes.
Well, we're asking for the approval, not necessarily for any of the technical aspects. Giving us the additional year.
Yeah.
And during that time, you know, if you, as a condition, that we will be providing you prior to the ultimate building certificate of occupancy, I guess, or the building sign-off, these plans. I don't think it requires, you know, anything more than just you reviewing with the building commissioner. But yeah, it will, the ultimate rendering isn't going to look like this. It's going to be changed. There's some technicalities that I was not aware of. My eye is not nearly as keen as yours, but obviously the change in this is and that will be reflected on those plans. And please, if you drive by and you see something, say something, you know.
Stealing from the MBTA. So the request is.
Just an extension of time.
Great, an extension.
Yeah, as long as we're comfortable that whatever minor changes you made just be administered and you're comfortable.
Yeah, well, I'll make sure.
The windows, I told you guys.
You know, I think the best bet would be if either you or maybe you, Joe, can just talk to the, before we get any certificate of occupancy, that you'll have a chance just to.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Because I assume you want to have this conversation on a day like today rather than whenever.
There's no need to bring me in on something like.
No, but Krista may. I don't know where it goes file-wise. Joe? Do you need the rendering?
I'll email.
I don't, do we need the rendering if there's going to be a new rendering? I don't think so.
I guess we should take it if we can have it.
I guess what I'd like to see is, do we have, you know, do we have the actual plans of what we approved for this, for the phase one compared to what I'm looking at now?
Yes, you do. That was submitted, that has been submitted.
That was submitted earlier today.
Can we look at them? Is there any way we can see them side by side? And I feel like I'm, you know, trying to switch between screens here and figure out what I'm looking at.
I can pull them up.
Wasn't the one that we originally, oh, that's right.
I can do my best side by side. Marissa had the updated ones.
Okay. We submitted, I'm just trying to get some background for you. When we ran into some issues with the prior architect, who can remain nameless, we resubmitted the new set of plans to Marissa. So you'll see the dates on those plans that go back. And those are the plans they were working on when they realized that these discrepancies were going to cause and some undue issues that were going to be coming up. But those are in the file, the plans that we built off of. The ones that you currently have now are the existing ones as to, as far as the work has been done consistent with that. You know, basically what the site plan, and this is not my purview, but it's the exterior of the building. But most of the changes were occasioned by interior issues that we ran into, which were unforeseen. I would also say this in all fairness. This is so rare that you ever have an opportunity, you know, we walk away with a set of plans and ultimately what's built isn't always exactly what was. This is a second-tier approach, only because of the phasing that puts us in this position. Now, I think every applicant should have as-built plans submitted before.
Well, we do, Ken, we do have the, it's in the bylaw now. And you have to have an as-built plan.
Well, if in fact that's being done.
I mean, whether or not it's being, whether or not our building commissioner is, you know, enforcing that is, that's not a conversation I'm going to have right now, but it's.
I understand, I understand, Mr. Palito, the change in the bylaw. And in fact, if it's followed, I think it's a great idea to ensure that everybody stays as honest as they propose they are going to be when the project is built. The reality is sometimes things don't always work out exactly, not because of either lack of due diligence or not being candid at the beginning, it's things come up. But I would hate to see somebody having to redo their structure because of some minor technical. I think ultimately what we're trying to accomplish though is get this project done as close to the original application as we can. I think if you show, see a material change as opposed to a minor change, then I think you're, there has to be some way of dealing with it. I'm not sure quite how to do it, because I haven't seen it done before.
I think the few things that we're talking about are sort of landing in an area that you agree with.
Yes, I'm not in disagreement.
You know, that's the thing I want to point out. I think these are both the same.
These are the two versions that were submitted by Ken earlier today. So they're not exactly the same.
Well, these are the ones that we.
But these are not, these are not the ones that we voted on.
Okay.
Yeah, which is a difference. That's something.
But I would say, Joe, in terms of, I think tonight, you know, I think, well, I'm going to open it up first like public comment and then we can talk briefly. But, you know, if the main focus tonight is just an extension of time, right? So I think we can have this conversation later, but if there are other things that people want to throw out there, now is probably a good time since we're talking about it.
I think it's a very healthy discussion.
Yeah. But Ken, what is the extension that you're looking for exactly? What dates to what dates?
I would ask for, what do you think, another year?
We should be completely done.
Completely done with phase one?
With phase one and two.
One and two.
We need to be.
As much as we enjoy coming, we would like to, so what is the deadline on phase one right now?
It was about.
Today?
Yeah, it was about this time.
And how far away are you from completion?
We already passed rough inspection in phase one. And phase one is the, I guess, was the biggest portion of it because we had to rebuild. When we have to extend it, you build new, it's much quicker than rebuilding it. So when we rebuilt the house, we started, but again, we hit the winter, the winter months, everything got delayed. So we had the rough inspection, we already passed it like a few weeks ago. We're ready to close the walls.
We passed fire, we passed rough, we passed plumbing, we passed electrical. This week.
Sprinkler.
Sprinkler. And I need to, this week, all of my insulation is already done. Spray foam is done up on the ceiling, on attic ceiling. And I'm planning to do insulation inspection and hopefully next week I'm going to start closing the walls.
So technically, what do we consider done when we do something at phase one? Is there any guidance on that or?
The finishes, I must say, the finishes aren't done or, you know, you couldn't move in tomorrow. Like are the floors in or the walls painted? I mean, I'm assuming that's not part of it.
No, the rough is done.
Rough is done, okay. Okay, thanks.
So do we, I guess, how much time do they need for phase one, I guess, is the root of the question? So if phase one doesn't get completed until the carpeting is down and the, you know, the dishes are in the cabinets, then that's one date. If it can be done after a rough, then it's a different date. I think for financing purposes, you know, the phase one that we've accomplished and the permits that we've received will allow for that refinancing to have occurred. You know, they're not looking for, you know, a move-in date yet for anybody because, you know, ultimately, nobody wants to move in if there's still being construction done on the other side of the wall. I will tell you one thing, just so, because I actually was inside. Most of phase two is already done. It's just the push-out part hasn't been done. So if you go in, you'll see the stairs leading to the other units of phase two.
Doors are put in.
So it's, a lot of that's already been done. When they were inside redoing the building and structurally supporting the beams, I mean, this is something interesting.
Prepared for phase two.
How about we open it up to public comment for a minute, just to see if anybody here is here for that? And then we, as the, we can open it up back over to the board and we can ask any questions that we want. So we'll close Ken's presentation and open it up to public comment. I don't know if anybody here, is anybody online here to comment on this? Okay, if none, then I'll close public comment and we can just go right back to your line of questions, Bill.
So, so back to the root of why they're here, right? So they want time extension. And I just am trying to get some guidance on what time we gave them or when it's due versus what they're asking for now. And then it would make logical sense to me that the same duration that we had previously for the phase two would be tacked on to the end of whatever this extension is. So if they tell us they need another two months to finish phase one, then, you know, we just do the math for phase two, adding the last phase two timing. That's what I'm trying to figure out. I think these two phases can be done concurrently. I think now that we're at this point where we've gotten the sign offs, we can actually start doing more work on, on phase two and will now be able to do the push-out on the back, which will, I think, what the kitchens are going in there, uh, for the other units. So, and that's already in the original footprint. So it, this is more of a technical exercise.
Yeah.
And than, than it is in terms of, of true phasing where in, and you do one, one set of units and then you do another set that you've contemplated conceptually, this is all done at once. I mean, everything that you see that's there is going to be there, except for the bump out in the back.
Right, so we've already approved the phase two.
So yes, you had, you approved phase two indirectly by approving phase one because the original application asked for the six units. We asked for the phasing. We're the ones that created this, this responsibility to come back before you. Not that you told us we had to do it this way. We said, can we do it this way? Does it allow us to get our financing so we can finish? Plus it would, from, from a FEMA's perspective, it allowed us to do it this way. As you may recall, the back end of that building will be on, on pylons, whereas the rest of the building is on the existing foundation. Right, we did that, I'll do the site review, and I remember we, we. Yeah. You know, approved the phase two part. Right. We know exactly what's coming. Again, the only thing that I'm still unclear on is when that phase one was supposed to end. I don't think there was any specific time.
Deadline, I think we were supposed to end the whole project, which now that I'm thinking, it's, was a little bit overzealous in one year.
Our decision, um.
I'm sorry.
Your decision was one year, you, you know.
One year.
That was one year for the whole project.
For the whole project. Is that where you recited, Angela? Well, it's, it's, we contemplated that we would find ourselves needing to come back, and that's why there was this administrative review. Yeah. Uh, you know, clearly we, we couldn't define things that we were. I, I have no problem with the time. I have no problem with the plans. I, I do think that there are some things that I think they're willing to do that make it closer to. You know something, every one of these suggestions, I think, has ultimately resulted in these units being worth more. You know, because it's, it's all, these are numbers. This is what, what they're dealing with. They have to make it work. But tonight, our technical challenge here. So if, if you think, and, and believe me, it didn't occur to me that the people in the front unit will now have more light and therefore ultimately when they go in to look at the unit they're buying, it looks brighter inside. I suspect that's going to help be helpful. I, I don't look at that and see that, but you did, so we have no problem. That's not telling us we got to tear the roof down like they had on that other unit that was down the street. You may remember that one, when the guy just put this addition on and, without a permit. But this is just trying to work out these technicalities and we're more than willing to work.
Ken, how much time do you think you realistically need just to like get everything done?
Fourteen months. Can we do fourteen months?
Fourteen months.
I thought you just said a year.
Yeah, I just.
You said twelve or fourteen.
When you said the word realistically, she looks at me like, really? Probably closer to fourteen months.
So I guess my thing, I, I thought, I thought we're going to get a little bit closer to, to rather than go the other way. So maybe we just, I think I'd be okay saying a year because if it's supposed to be done now and, you know, let's see like how it goes. Prefer you guys not have to come back to us, but I feel like, you know.
The coming back part, you know, you give a permit to, to build, so long as the building is going on, we don't have to come back. It's if there was a cessation in the time and therefore the permit lapsed because we didn't act on the permit after we got some relief, then we'd have to come back and ask you once again. This, as I said, was self-imposed. We forced ourselves to come here so we could then go to FEMA. Or we could then go to the lender and say, look, we have now gotten the, the sign off on part A as opposed to asking for the sign off on the whole building, which we knew we couldn't possibly do with the amount of financing that we had to do how much we've done. So the timing part, it was almost immaterial. It was the, the phasing part, the creating two pieces of this puzzle that had to fit together from FEMA's perspective. Because what happened is the building inspector will then do an evaluation for FEMA as well as for the banks.
Yeah, no, I think, I think we understand that.
Okay, I, I didn't want to be repetitive. I just want to make sure I communicated.
I do want to ask just a question in general. The, um, what are the, what is the risk to the town or to the adjacent neighbors if this was fourteen months versus twelve months?
Yeah, I guess just, you know, we have these timelines. We want projects to stay on pace. I feel like projects had always kind of, I mean, look, they're, they, they want people to get, they want to complete it as fast as possible, right? Like they don't have any money until they get in there.
Get it done faster, twelve months.
Right.
But I'm just thinking ahead that, I mean.
And, and you're looking back at the last few months of what has happened.
Emergencies happen, we have to hire Ken, and I mean, it's a little.
So, what I'm, I'm reading, I'm, I'm reading our, our decision from last September, which was, um, it was filed on September thirtieth with the, um, the town clerk, so, you know, it's a couple of weeks ago. So, um, our conditions for approval were, there shall be fencing along the rear line of the property, all landscaping shall be done with native species. That said, the applicant and project shall comply with all town departments and other applicable boards committees for any additional necessary. So you said you went to the fire department and so forth, and you got their okay to determine that the fire trucks have the adequate turning radius.
That was said at the beginning.
It was at the beginning.
And the Department of Health and ensure that the dumpster complies with any and all regulations. I guess that's for the construction purposes. And then it says, if within ten months of the date hereof, the applicant does not reasonably expect the project to be complete within twelve months, which as we know, it's not, um, of the date hereof, or if the project is not actually complete within such twelve month period, then the applicant shall prepare a development impact statement and provide any other information that may be required pursuant to section five, six, two, five of his own bylaw to be submitted to the board and subsequently reappear before the board for administrative review. So, um, so you're calling this the administrative review, but we don't have any kind of a development impact statement. Is that right?
No, that's not exactly correct. Uh, the developmental impact statement was never required for the original, but we provided you with all of the rec, prerequisites to that, which would be the registered engineer, the registered landscape architect, all of that was, was done. It was not done under the developmental impact statement criteria, which is controlled by you, which you have the sole discretion. I, I didn't appeal the decision because I thought that that was an error because there was never a requirement that we provide more information or redo all of our technical specs again. That was never it. And as a matter of fact, you know, I did reach out. I, I, I reached out to Mr. Dooley, who's, if he wishes to opine. I, I said, it's here. He said, no, I, we need a narrative. You explain to me what's going on. And you provide us with the before, you provide us with, and tell us whatever technical changes that you have defined as minor. So long as there's no material change, and, and Mr. Dooley can correct me if he thinks my, my characterization of what he told me is incorrect. And we did that. There was never a requirement that we come back with a developmental impact statement. If you ever read your own zoning, your, your own bylaw, you'll realize that it's never was ever anticipated for a project that has already been designed and approved.
I think what Angela's point though is that if you had known about the way things were going, you should have come to us with that.
I, I.
But, but I'm going to just say, you know, personally, I feel like we all want this project to like, you know, do well. It's right on Humphrey Street. You guys are clearly making progress. You just need a little bit more time. So I, I personally wouldn't feel like we have to hold them to that. They've had some health issues and some other things that I think are forgivable. But I think what Angela's point though is that there were things in the decision that said, you know, X, Y, and Z were going to be done, and I don't know that those were done.
Well, two things, I, I.
My point in bringing, you know, Mr. Schutzer was just to make sure that, he just went back there so we, the whole board could say, okay, this is what we said. But here's where we're at, so I thought it was important to bring that up.
I, I. Angela. Angela, could you tell us what exactly that, because I don't, I don't have any internet and I can't, I don't have the, the decision in front of me. What exactly is the extension that we're, like, what are we saying? What's the phrasing that we're using to?
Well, the phrasing that was used here, it, it said, if within ten months of the date hereof, which was September thirtieth, the twenty four, the applicant does not reasonably expect the project to be complete within twelve months of the date hereof, or if the project is not actually complete within such twelve months, then the applicant shall prepare a demolition, excuse me, development impact statement and provide any other information that may be required pursuant to section five, six, two, five of the zoning bylaw to be submitted to the board and subsequently reappear before the board for an administrative review. So I think what we can do here, if the other members, you know, agree is, as we go through this discussion, make sure that whatever we decide tonight, we reference back to this so that, you know, we, we just have, so that everything's nice and clean. You know, at this point, we understand what the, what the delays have been. We get it.
So what if we just extend, what if we took that ten-month period of time and extended that fourteen months? And that's essentially a year from today, and if you're not done within a year from today, then I think we would really expect you to come back with, you know, a much heavier, um, you know, application.
I have, I have three comments to make. First was, I met with Marissa on time. I said, this is what it says. I'd want to be on your agenda. Well, you can't be. You're just, you know, we have too many things. Don't worry, you know, you have, you came here, you asked for the time. I said, she said, I can't get you on the agenda. Maybe October. If I'm, you know, I said, okay, so long as you're okay. I just, I was there. I physically presented myself on time. The fact I'm here today is because you couldn't put us on your schedule.
And Ken, I would, I would say too, September thirtieth, this is the next meeting.
Yeah.
You know, so that's, that's just, I, I, I do.
I mean, I.
I do agree on that.
The, the other part was, the other part was this. We never heard that you were going to require, it, it was in that decision. I didn't write the decision. Generally, I'm called upon to draft decisions for, for the boards that I appear. And this board, Marissa, wrote that decision. I didn't take exception and say, because what happens is I also asked, and this is a wonderful opportunity to voice my thoughts, I hope it is anyway, is I asked to have an opportunity to review the decision before it got filed. I said, can I look at it to make sure that I agree my memory and your memory are the same? She said, I got to get permission. It ended up getting filed. I saw that DIS in there. There was never an agreement that we had to come back and present, provide a full DIS. I then read the bylaw. It said, any requirements is at the sole discretion of the board. So theoretically, I would be asking this board to opine that those requirements as detailed in five, two, whatever those numbers are, be waived, so we don't have to come back with full set of engineered plans, another landscaping plan. I mean, this is, we're now talking tens of thousands of more dollars of soft costs that were never anticipated. What you anticipated was my request to come back before you, to ask you to phase this project so they could get their financing and we wouldn't have to tear down this building to, to put filings in order to meet FEMA requirements. I told you that at the beginning. This was nothing that is, you know, a sleight of hand. This was all presented to the board because I didn't want them to go and spend a nickel until I knew that everything we were doing was going to pass muster. And we have done everything we possibly can. I think you should be proud of this building. I don't know if they're going to make any money, but, but this is a project that, that's, that's something that's meaningful to them. These are two individuals. This is not a construction firm. This is, this is Mr. and Mrs. Glickburg, who are trying their very best. And at every opportunity, we would go and speak to the building inspector, who's, by the way, has changed. Our town planner has changed, but we've been forthright. And I, I, I don't know if Ms. Polito was suggesting anything to the contrary. I'm not suggesting she is. But we have been, we have been on board with trying to be as open as we possibly can. When we learned about the issue with, from the building inspector about the height of the porch, they were on it immediately. They, 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 they worked something out that was going to make building code requirements. But obviously, it was going to be different from what the planning board did on site plan review. I'm not challenging that. I'm just trying to explain that, that these are hardworking people that have tried to do their very best.
I, I don't want to speak for Angela, but I, I think Angela's point is actually just going through and, and stating what was here. We do have a change in staff and everything else. I don't think there's an accusation coming out of it, and correct me if I'm, I'm wrong.
No, you're right, Chair.
Yeah, this is, this was just to.
It was important that we start from where we left off.
Yeah.
That's all.
And, and I would, I would.
We're just trying to move forward on a, on an extension here.
And I, I would personally say the DIS, there's no reason to do it, and I don't think we're suggesting that that.
You know, the irony is, I, I've not seen DISs done on any project to this, to the degree to which a DIS is identified in your bylaw. It is such an onerous responsibility that, that it would probably preclude ninety percent of the, of the projects ever done that required site plan. But it got, somehow got invol, you know, when I used the phasing, which came from that DIS section, the whole section got incorporated in the decision, which was never the intent.
Well, that's.
Well, yeah, you know, we can always go back and look at the tape. And in any event, if that isn't so important right now, what's important right now is that I felt, felt it was meaningful for the board and for all of us to look at exactly how we left it when we made a decision so that we have, we can actually connect what we're doing tonight with what we're going to vote on tonight. So that it makes sense.
So what do we feel about?
And Joe, I thought you're, I thought Joe's suggestion of, of, based on the fact that we're at the ten months as to, as of September thirtieth, that the fourteen-month extension makes sense.
They could do it any sooner. It's, it's.
I don't think they'll be penalized if they do it sooner.
No, no, to the.
But to not have to, not have to pause and come back for approval.
I'm just trying, I'm just trying to be as conservative, but asking for more than I'm going to actually need.
But I think, I think being conservative in this way, it would actually get the project done sooner than if they ran out of time. It had to be paused. They had to come back. And if the point is getting it done, I, I do think the fourteen months does not allow it to go on for two years. It, it lets it go on for a second year.
It'll go bankrupt if it goes on.
Okay, so just to make sure we're on the same page. What we're saying is that we're going to amend the decision to change ten months to fourteen months in that one line.
I'd also ask you to amend the decision regarding the onerous DIS condition that was never intended, and, and I mean, you're sort of pretending it doesn't exist, but it got in there. And I don't want to run into a situation which says technically you have not comported with the requirements as Mr. Polito was.
I believe that was administrative and not by the board. Is that correct, Angela?
Um, I really don't know, to tell you the truth.
Yeah, I don't remember.
I don't have.
I don't have any recollection of a conversation in here about, about it.
I can tell you that we have to go back and listen to the tape.
Yeah.
And that's the only way to know for sure. At this point, I, I think that that's not what we're dealing with here. We're dealing with a timing issue.
So, so if that's the case, you know, even, I, I have no memory, but it doesn't really matter. It doesn't even matter what it, what it said and what happened. What matters is this is an unappealed decision, which is the state of the responsibility that we are, have to follow. I, I mean, every wrong decision that, that goes unappealed, it becomes a right decision. So this is what we're working with. So I need this decision to, to be amended as part of our administrative hearing process to obviate the responsibility to do something that nobody requires us to do, nor does anyone suggest we do.
To be honest, I didn't know that that was going to be a part of this meeting, you know, so.
You know, it, it wasn't until I.
My agenda or radar to take it out, and I haven't, to be honest, spent a lot of time thinking about the implications of removing the DIS.
Well, you can waive it. You can waive the provision. You right now have the authority to waive any provisions of a DIS.
What was that?
I'm not willing to do that until I listen to the tape.
Well, let me ask you this.
I think, I think, I, I, look, I, I'm just going to say, I think, I think we're generally agreed on the, the extension.
Well, I, I think the last way you phrase it confused me a little bit.
Okay, sure.
So, uh, let's just run through it one more time, and I apologize.
Yeah.
So, all there are things that are creeping into the conversation.
Yeah.
We're here just for the time extension.
Right.
Right? Everybody on the same page there? You're here for administrative review on the phasing. That's, that's where we, I, I specifically said, we have to come back so we can, we can complete the first phase, get the building permit approved, so we could then apply for the second building permit. And that's why, that's why this whole.
Sure, but there's this explanation of delay, and look, I, I think we're, we're totally sympathetic to the reason for the delay. Everybody wants the project to get done. This doesn't mention anything about the DIS or anything like that. And I feel like we just haven't had enough time to think about that aspect of it. I think we're all aligned on getting you the extension that you want.
No, I, I, I feel, I.
I do also think we should have the, the town staff review how this made its way in, which would be a review of our meeting. If it is not showing up in the meeting notes, my sense of this was it was an administrative action.
That was my understanding. I saw it.
And I think what we, we should continue as a.
And, and I think what we, we should continue as a conversation is, right now, if that's, if that's something that is in there, and it's, it's something that's being done administratively, we have to see where it sits in the bylaws.
I'm, I'm sorry, Joe, I didn't catch that last part.
It, it seems like if, if this has happened, it was either an interpretation of the bylaws or it's in the bylaws, and if it's something that needs to be reviewed, we should be reviewing it and get it out of the bylaws.
No, it belongs, it gives you authority, which you, which you need. The question, the question is that the intent of this process was not to do a new project a year from now.
Right.
It was the same project that needed to be phased. A DIS is a very comprehensive process, requiring all registered individuals, and the detail in those sections is, and I saw that, but at that point, I didn't see it till the decision had already been filed and the 20 days had elapsed.
Right, but I think what we're saying is that we don't remember everything that went on at the meeting. We'd have to go back and look at the tapes to see it, and I think we're all, I think we all appreciate the fact that it could be pretty onerous, and if it's something that just slipped in there, it's not our intent to, to keep it in there, but we need to check and see how it-
I'm not sure how that even ties into what we do tonight.
It wasn't. That was the whole point.
Let's get the timing figured out.
Yeah.
Right, because that's what we're here for, the timing. We'll figure out the, the other thing.
So, I, I wish to let the issue go by, but, but since Ms. Appalito made it part of the record, it had to be addressed. I couldn't, I couldn't leave this-
Sure, yeah, that's fine. I think, but I think we've addressed it now. If it, I think, I think what you're hearing is that the board, just being for myself, I think what you're hearing is that the board's generally open to revisiting this, if this is something that got in there by an error or something like that, but we are not in a position right now to talk about it, and we want to extend the project, so.
I, I'm, I just don't want to leave any stone unturned.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
I don't want to start spending tens of thousands of dollars to then be told that, "Oh, by the way, I think we're still going to require a DIS."
Yep.
I need some assurance. It can be a straw vote. It, it can be a sense of the board. It doesn't even require-
So, Bill, I guess to go to your question about the timing, what I was saying is that the 10 months-
Is there a, that's for May, I mean?
The, the, but-
I was just going to write down, whereas you're talking.
Yeah, by, by 10 months, so I guess by July 31st.
Well, September 2024 was when-
Was the 10-month mark.
Yeah.
Well, then it was 20 days from that date, because that was, I needed, the appeal period ran, the date of the decision.
July was the 10-month mark.
So, 10-month mark, it was to July.
It was July. So what I was saying was that we would amend the decision by just changing that 10-month to, you know, if you want to give them a year, then we would say 14 months.
But they're sending more than that.
Or if we wanted to give them 14 months, we'd say 16 months.
They had, they had a year. They said they had it notified by, by this, and they had to, if they weren't going to finish it, they had to come in.
Right, if they didn't think that they were going to complete.
So now, now, this 10 months, if we change that to 14, that doesn't bring us enough time for them to finish.
No, it doesn't.
Well, if they need-
So we need an additional 14 months from today to end of project.
Right, so, so, right, yeah, so.
Five, three, four, five.
So, today is, what, September?
20 and 14 from today.
September 25. Maybe 10, 14, maybe 12, 14? So 14 months from, from then, which is what?
16 months.
No, it'd be-
Be November of '27.
We're just, we're just changing the 10, we're just adding up to the 10 whatever time they need. So whatever, I think that's the easiest way to do it. We could, we could also just say right now, we're going to give them until, you just, you know.
We have until January, January the 1st.
It's 24 then.
January the 1st?
January 1st, 2027?
Yeah.
So that sounds like a date.
Okay. So we're going to replace 10 months with January 1st, 2027?
Yeah.
So, that's 14 months from now?
Correct.
Correct?
Angela, is there a section in the decision that's-
If you wanted to just do one change, you change this 10 to 24.
I'm sorry.
We're just going to change 10 months to January 1st, 2027?
Okay.
Is there a section of the, of the decision that I can reference?
It's under conditions for approval, and it's number four.
That's correct.
Does someone want to make a motion?
I would make a motion to extend the, the decision to January 1st, 2027.
Can I, can I ask just one question before the vote is taken? And the question, the question is, what would be the process for amending the decision? Does it require that, that there could be an administrative, without our presence, to correct that? I mean, otherwise, we got to come back to just clean up this issue.
Only if you don't complete the project by-
By January 1st, 2027.
Okay, if that's the case, well, because I don't anticipate that the building commissioner is going to be controlled by that portion of the provision, of the conditions, which talks about a DIS. He won't. He's looking at it very differently. Your board, though, has brought this issue up, and I think, I just think it needs resolution because you're suggesting technically that we're in violation of the condition that allows us to ask for the extension. And yet, you're granting the extension, so inferentially, by granting the extension, you are amending the decision.
We are amending the decision.
Okay. That's, that's, thank you.
Yeah. I mean, the amendment is, is the extension.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, and that's the part that we are, we are, we are prepared to, to change tonight. That's what we're looking at.
Yes, thank you.
So moved? Do, do you-
Sorry, could you just say it? Could you?
Okay, so this is amending the, amending the period to end on January 1st, 2027 for both phases.
Yes.
Yeah.
Amending the period under condition number-
Number four.
Yep.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
I-
You have to do roll call.
Oh, do we, oh, because Angela's not here? Okay, can we do a roll call?
Yeah.
Angela?
Angela Appalito, aye.
Jer?
Yes, aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Joe Sheridan is here. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Angela votes aye.
I think when we did it-
Yes, aye.
Okay, does that count? Okay.
Yeah, it was a roll call.
It's just a roll call.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Close it with that.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
I'll, I'll take you outside.
Thanks, Joe, for filling in.
My pleasure.
I was happy to spectate. All right.
I hope I didn't just characterize any of our conversations.
All good. All right, next we have Delamar Swampscott Hotel. Just for context, I'm going to give some background while we're seeing this today, and then I'll hand it over to Krista, speaking on behalf of the Office of Community Development, and then Dixon Mallory, who I believe is with Clearview Investments and Hospitality Group, to speak on behalf of the proponent here. Traditionally, we would see this for a site plan at some point in the future, and at some point, we will see this as part of a site plan application in the future. We're seeing this now because as part of the select board's land development agreement with Clearview, they have to provide input on schematic design for the hotel, and that's part of their ground lease, LDA. They have asked us for comment, and this is our chance to provide comment to the select board as part of their review as per their LDA. So that's why we're here today. That's what we're going to hear from the applicants here. And at the end of this, we'll be compiling the comments that we have and provide tonight to be sent to the select board in writing for their consideration. I believe they're going to be reviewing this at their next meeting and advancing on their LDA at some point in early November. With that, Krista, I can hand it over to you, or Dixon, whoever's would like to speak.
Dixon, do you have anything prepared that you want to share? Or?
Can you all hear me, first of all?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. Nice to see you all. Krista, I could just kind of go through the plans that I presented the other week. I mean, that's, you know, as far as, you know, we have. I think that's probably the most appropriate thing to share.
Sounds great. Yeah, they all have copies printed at the, in front of them as well.
Okay, great. So I'll just go ahead and share my screen, if that works.
Yep.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, one second.
And then I will be writing down comments as you make them and decide what you want to send to the select board, and then we can go over them all and refine them. So we have the list before the end.
Yeah, I think, I think in order to get everything accurately, and I think you're going to, I want to make sure we're not putting you through like, you know, crazy work to collect all of our comments as we're going. After we run through this, we hear the presentation and kind of discuss this, maybe we can walk through some of the comments you picked up before we leave tonight, and just make sure they're all aligned, so we're accurately getting them everything we need.
Yes, yeah, and I can go through, and the transcript will-
Perfect.
-catch anything. If I don't catch it, verbatim.
All right, Dixon, the floor is yours.
Well, again, thank you for having me, and I guess I will start by reviewing the plans that were submitted to the select board. I'm forgetting on which date they were submitted, but this presentation that I'm going to go through has some preliminary renderings of our proposed renovation of the Hadley School, and also some schematic floor plans that we have also submitted. So I'll just start by going through the first few renderings that we have of the exterior. As you can see here, this is a shot from a few years ago when school was still in session, and this is hopefully something like we think it'll look like in the future once it's renovated. As you can see, not a whole lot of change to the exterior. The biggest and most stark change is the installation of new windows, which are more in line and period correct with type of windows that were originally installed in the building when it was first built in 1911. The other major additions you'll see here, this kind of little rooftop element, that is actually an extension of the stairwell that runs, you know, there's two stairwells that run up and, on either end of the building. We do have a rooftop amenity deck. In order to comply with fire code, we need two forms of egress, so this is an extension of that stairwell, and there's another stairwell over on the other side of the building here, in between the main building and the annex, rather, where we have our elevator shaft, two elevator shafts, and another stairwell. So, in terms of the facade, that's kind of really more proposing. There's a, a bit of an awning here. This will be the entrance to the restaurant, the dedicated entrance to the restaurant. There will be access to the restaurant from the interior of the hotel as well, but this will be a dedicated entrance.
Dixon, may I ask a really quick question? In the rendering, I am noticing that the deep, the stone detail around the windows on the, sort of over that entrance is shown as being removed. Is that something that is being altered, or is that something that's just an oversight?
I think that was an oversight on the rendering. We have no intention of removing that.
Yeah, because that's sort of prominent, so I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah, yep. And, yeah, we actually went back and put, you know, these, those panels that say Hadley School, those actually didn't make it into the rendering the first time, so we went back and add them in. Again, no intention to manipulate the exterior in any aesthetic way, other than improving, you know, painting, repointing, you know, where there has been some decay on the facade.
Great, thank you.
This is kind of just a straightaway shot at the front of the building. This monument sign, that's not necessarily how it'll end up looking, and that's just there for kind of massing illustrative purposes. As you can see, the facade really does not change here. Here you get a first glimpse of that elevator tower. Again, there'll be two elevators in this new, new construction element, as well as a stairwell on the backside of this new tower. And that's really the only significant new construction that will be happening on the exterior of the building, or at least it'll be visible from the outside of the building.
And is that the second form of egress for the rooftop amenity space?
That's correct, yeah. It's on the backside of the structure here, is the stairwell.
Okay.
And this, and obviously, this provides ADA access to both buildings. Right now, neither of the annex or the main building has an elevator, so putting that point of connectivity right in between the two buildings makes sense, and it also allows us to preserve more of the interiors of both buildings. So we will have to demolish the little connector that connects the main building and the annex, but otherwise, we're able to, you know, keep much more of the interior spaces in both buildings. I thought this, someone sent this to me. This was just an original elevation from the, the plans of the school even before it was called the Hadley School. Let's see, it was on his plans, the Reddington Elementary School from Swampscott. But you can see those windows there are much more in line with what we are proposing than what's, you know, currently there.
Will, what is the window itself? I'm looking at the Type K Marvin. Are the muntens in these one, windows fully expressed?
On the rendering, I, I don't think so. They're not probably fully accurate, but-
No, no, I'm sorry. In the windows themselves, are they, are they dividers inside the glass, or will there actually be the muntens on top of the glass?
I would need to go back and check the specs of the windows. I can't answer that right now. I could have our architect look at it and get an answer for you.
Go.
So this is another shot of the, I guess, kind of with the view from the back to the water here. So this is, again, that entrance to the restaurant. This shows the outdoor dining element that we're proposing for the à la carte dining restaurant. You know, how far out this dining space extends, kind of towards Reddington Street versus towards Lynn Scott Park, is to be determined. We might have to take away some of the outdoor dining here for a few more parking spaces, but in any event, the best views, you know, while sitting out here in this proposed outdoor dining area are, of course, closer to the park and looking down to the water, so that's not too much of an issue. And again, you see the extension of the stairwell up there. Here's just a close-up of that new elevator and stair tower, and just for what it's worth, the facade materials and the exact design on this new construction are not finalized by any stretch of the imagination. This is more just for massing, to show the public, you all kind of, you know, what the new construction is going to be from a size standpoint. We just wanted to make it look pretty stark, you know, obviously, black brick versus red, to make it look different for the moment.
Is this the main entrance to the hotel also?
No, the main entrance is likely going to be this door here. It'll be either or. I mean, this will lead up right into the lobby. Again, this is an elevator tower, so if you're staying in, you know, the annex and you need to take the elevator up, you can just enter through this door. But the hotel lobby is gonna be right here, I'll show you that on the plans.
But the.
Those windows.
The handicapped access is actually through the uh tower.
Correct, yeah.
Is the tower actually connected to the annex as well?
Yes.
Yep.
So from my last shot, it looked like there was a gap there, I'm not sure.
Now, there's a.
Like that.
Connected there, the annex has a little kind of jut out on the first and second floor, so, but you see the connection there.
The, the annex and the um, the main part of Hadley are on different floor planes.
Right.
So that's the bridging to allow, um, it's a, I'm assuming it's a double sided elevator and then you have.
Yeah, there's kind of, there's a lot of little stuff.
One side that aligns with the few steps down.
So, yeah, there's gonna be a number of little steps for the, for the elevator cuz they're, they're not exactly aligned, as you said. Uh this is the backside of the new stair tower, you can see actually the stairs through those windows there. This element here, this is the bathrooms. That will service the rooftop amenity deck. Those, they look kind of quite visible now, but keep in mind that there are all those trees that line the property line on Lynn Scott Park in front of the hotel. The school, um so those will really not be as prominent and visible as it se, as it appears right here.
What is the staircase that I'm seeing at the bottom there going into a basement?
This?
Yeah.
That will be, this is gonna be more for pickup and drop off for the restaurant, you know, employee entrance, back of house.
It's all service related?
All service related, all back of house.
Okay.
Okay, so here's the site plan. Just zoom in on that a little bit, but. As you can see here, we have this all labeled as dining terrace. As I mentioned earlier, we might need to cut some of that back, reduce some of the dining terrace area and focus it more around towards Lynn Scott Park. Uh again, which is a better. Uh better area for it anyhow, and that allows to get a few more parking spaces because for the rest of the site, you know, it's not that big. And we don't have a lot of opportunity for significant landscaping cuz a lot of it will have to be dedicated to parking. And as we know, parking is, is an issue in town. So in terms of what, you know, happens on the rest of the property, again, it's mostly parking.
Your dumpster is back behind the elevator tower?
Correct, yep.
Reading that? Okay, and screened, cuz that's, that's one thing that would be a big improvement at Hadley cuz currently it's um, it's quite a design element on Lynn Scott Park.
Yeah, no, there'll be, you know, of course, in line, native plantings that will screen and shield the parking lot to some degree. We'll of course be consulting with the neighbors here and across the street to make sure it's all. You know, in line with what, what the town wants. And of course, we'll try and screen the dumpsters as, as much as possible.
So the path for the trucks to do drop offs and trash pickup is through the first drive, through the.
Right here. So they'll kind of enter through this proposed curb cut here. Go back this way.
Then back all the way out or is there room to turn around there?
There could, there should be room to turn around, turn it this way and then back down.
Isn't there a wall, a stone wall that's.
There is a stone wall.
Past that though, cuz the building doesn't go up to the stone wall.
No.
Yes, it's kind of this line.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is more or less the stone wall.
So there's actually more space than. Shown, right?
Say that again?
There's more space than shown because the stone wall is really. Like you could, you could walk behind there.
Well, on the other side of the stone wall, I mean, that's pretty much right up to the lot line, the dumpster and, and so forth, right? I think the stone wall is just at the.
So is the lot line that dotted line or is the lot line the, the wall?
No, it's the wall.
The lot line more or less follows my mouse right here, I mean, it's. We're trying to maximize the amount of room that we have on the site.
Yeah.
And all those trees are on the park side of the wall.
It's a little bit small, but what's that little protrusion in the middle of the wall across from the annex?
That was a proposed new light pole, that can probably go in a little bit and that kind of um marks the end of the car parking. So beyond that little jut out, that's all for service, so for unloading and loading for service trucks.
Yes, that pole can move, right?
Yeah, so you see here, there's parking spots here. For guest cars and then beyond that, this is just open area for service.
One thing that I, I would. Love to see if you could explore is the parking lot lighting. Because of the fact that its adjacency is all residential. If that could be low level instead of high level lighting in, in height. So that the surfaces are lit, but the sky isn't lit and the, the space isn't lit and it's not going into the residences. I think that'll make a, a big impact on getting the neighbors around this on board. Um and I also think it'll give it, uh, it'll give the hotel. The feeling that the neighborhood, that it's part of the neighborhood.
Yeah, we, we discussed this at length during the public hearing.
Excellent.
Lighting and having input from, you know, all the neighbors.
Yeah.
You know, enough light for there to be, you know, safe, you know, to light the ground for safety, access and walking and what have you. But we have no interest in, you know, lighting up the sky.
And I think you, I, I think your, your guests would benefit from having view over instead of view through a lit parking lot.
Yep.
So I think it, it would be a, a very significant win on all parts. Are you finished or can, can I ask some questions? I don't want to interrupt you if you're still.
No, go ahead, I mean, if it's on the site plan, go ahead.
Well, we're, well, we're still on this page, just, just to clarify, I see there's nine compact spots right in front of the, the main entrance there. There's a handful of EV spots, can you just walk through like what the parking count is and what the, how it's delineated?
Yeah, the total parking count is, I think, sixty-three spaces on this plan.
Yep.
Um again, we might have to get a few more, could we be more efficient on, you know, some of this layout? Maybe, uh but again, the site is relatively tight.
Right, fr- from your experience in your other properties, uh, uh, on a site like this, how would you have your employees and, and those who are employed there park? Uh is that parking for them onsite and the guests are in addition to that and valet elsewhere? How does, from an operational perspective, how do you look at this?
We have valet parking at every one of our properties, uh that allows us to, um, you know, park more than in this case sixty-three spots. A lot of our employees take public transit to work. That helps mitigate, of course, not all of them do, so we will have to, you know, have them parking onsite or find offsite parking opportunities for them and for, for guests during peak hours, peak times.
Got it, and would you just lease parking spaces for valet with folks interested or something?
Yep, something along those lines, yep.
Understood, okay.
So the compact spaces there angled parking. And it looks like they're angled the wrong way. Cuz you want traffic to flow in from.
True, well, no, they've got the arrow, the in arrow on the, on the right, on the left.
Oh.
Okay.
So it's two ins.
Yeah, that's an, that's an in and an out. Any and an out, that's an in.
So it's one way until you get past the entrance, past the annex, and then it's two way into the. Parking, parking area.
Yeah.
For lack of better description.
Okay.
Got it, okay. And then.
Okay.
It's like you're wiring for EV charging stations, I think?
Yep, over here, I believe, yeah, right here. Dual head EV charging stations.
Any thoughts for, well, yeah, any thoughts for bikes or anything like that? I don't know, is that something you have at any of your properties?
Uh we do have bikes at. Actually, most of our properties, so we'll find a place for, for some bike racks.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, uh moving, is that okay if I move on?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So this is the basement, but as you all know, or maybe you don't, uh the basement is not really a full basement. You know, there's something like four and a half, five foot windows on the basement unit. So what we are proposing here for the, I'll start from the left to right. I pointed out the outdoor dining area for the restaurant. You can see those layout here, uh this room, which I think was currently an arts and crafts room, I believe. We kind of see that as becoming the, the pub lounge bar area of the, of the restaurant. And this area, which is currently part of the mechanical room, um that kind of being the more. You know, formal dining area, dining a la carte room. With, you know, nice warm lighting, so when you make that turn onto Reddington Street, you see a kind of a warm, you know, welcome under the property. Um again, pub room here, dining room here, uh again, the outdoor dining we've talked about already. Here's that dedicated step down into the restaurant. Restaurant bar. Leaves the bathrooms dedicated for the restaurant down here. And then fundamentally, everything that I'm highlighting with my mouse. The exact layout of, this is still to be determined, but this is all back of house. This is storage, this is kitchen, this is lockers, this is offices. None of that will really be guest facing. And that little ramp that someone pointed out to those steps, probably have to be a little bit bigger, but that's how you get into the back of house area. Right here is kind of the, called the wellness section of the restaurant of the hotel. This is where we're proposing to have our, our dedicated spa, which will be open to the public, but it'll be, it will have its de, a dedicated entrance. From the front of the property, there is a little door here that exists that kind of steps down and that'll be the dedicated entrance into the spa. Um and then this room here will be our fitness facility, our gym. And again, all ADA access will run through these two, two elevators here as well as the stairwell. In terms of the basement of the annex, uh really just all rooms. Bearing in size from four hundred and eighty-five square feet, which is quite a big room, as well as this one, seven hundred and seventy-five square feet. Then a few smaller ones, two ninety through sixty-five, uh but you have to line them up with the windows, obviously. So it lays out quite nicely for hotel rooms.
How many rooms are in the property total?
It'll be somewhere between fifty-six and fifty-nine, depending on how many suites we have, so we might combine a few rooms to create bigger suites. So it'll kind of take away.
Sure.
A key, as we say.
Yep.
Yeah. That'll be somewhere in that, in that range. Okay, so this is the first floor. And you'll see here, this is the dedicated hotel lobby, front desk, check in. Currently where the principal's offices and the, and the nurses' offices, we do have some bathrooms here kind of off the lobby. And we're proposing to really not touch physically the gymnasium. This becomes a ballroom, the event space for the hotel. This seating plan here shows, I think it's a hundred and twenty seats, which is actually quite a lot. Uh especially in the context of a hotel that has somewhere between fifty-six and, you know, sixty rooms, call it. So you just think about, you know, a wedding is an example of every room is. Rented out with two, uh, two occupants, it's about a hundred and twenty people, so there's your event, kind of lays out pretty nicely. Uh well, we're keeping the stage, we will probably have a dumb waiter that runs from the kitchen up to the ballroom, to the gym. But otherwise, um, you know, new windows. Current windows that overlook the park are, you know, kind of boarded up and glazed over, you think about brand new windows. Tons of natural light flowing into a space with twenty-five foot ceilings, uh it'll be a pretty special and beautiful room. Again, we're restoring, refinishing, uh all the detailing within the building or the, the gymnasium. But, you know, from an aesthetic standpoint, keeping all the molding and the, and the beautiful uh craft work that kind of surrounds the stage and the entire perimeter. And then these are, you know, these classrooms here, that's one classroom right now, but you can see. I say all we're really doing, it's gonna be a lot more complicated than the way I'm describing it. Really putting a demising wall down the middle of what's currently a, you know, eight hundred-ish square foot box of a classroom. Put a demising wall between each of these four windows, so each room has two very large windows. And then those kind, those big blank walls that are on, you know, either end of the building. Uh you solve that by putting your bathroom on that wall and then, you know, this bed faces. I don't actually know why they put a window there, that's a mistake, there's no window there, but.
There's a door there.
There is a door, you're right, on that first floor.
Some of us know these rooms really well.
Sure.
We can tell you the teachers that belong in each one.
But anyhow, you see bedroom here that faces the TV wall there, two windows, I mean, you can see, lays out pretty.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Pretty easily, uh and we're just showing connecting rooms, uh, you know, on every room, not every room will be a connector. Uh but of course, for, you know, families and people traveling together, that's nice to have, but not every room will be a connecting room. Just showing that for space and purposes. And the coat closets here, uh they're currently where the, the cubbies were, I guess, for the, the classrooms. You know, those can be a bathroom, it's kind of a long and narrow bathroom, but you have plenty of room and ways for to have a, a vanity, you can have a double vanity, plenty of room for that. And whether we put the toilet on the window side or the shower on the window side, again, to be determined. But we're able to keep a lot of that detailing uh in each of these rooms without uh having to lose square footage. Um and that layout really kind of remains consistent on the flanks of each of the, uh, the corners of the main building. And in the annex, um, again, these rooms almost stack just vertical, they're the same all the way up, um just aligning with the windows.
The uh function space, the gym? So you're keeping the stage a little bit outside of the schematic review here, but what's the, what's the intent of that? Is there pro, some programmatic reason you're hoping to use that or?
To bank.
I mean, if you're, if you're having a wedding, you could have a band on the stage, if you're, you know, you could have a big table up on the stage to kind of celebrate. No real reason to.
Okay, just a design touch.
Demolish it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then to that end, uh any more questions on the first floor? So we're also going to be keeping the mezzanine seating area that overlooks the ballroom, the ballroom, the gym. Uh we'd thought about putting a hotel room there, but you can see it's a huge room, I think it was something like seven hundred square feet. And there is the poured concrete, you know, stepped down seating. Which made laying out mechanicals, you know, very tricky cuz it is poured concrete. And furthermore, this window that's all the way at the end of the seating area. It's actually quite small, it'd be kind of comically small for a seven hundred plus square foot hotel room. So. Our intention is just to keep the, the seating area as is, uh try and refurnish those chairs. They're actually kind of quite, you know, beautiful in the metal detailing, uh refinish the wood. With the idea being that when the gym, the ballroom is not being used for a private event. You know, trying to figure out some sort of, you know, regularly scheduled programming, whether it's a speaker series, you know, at some form of a concert, standup comedian, you know, that kind of thing. That could be, of course, open to the public, um and be a fun use of the space, uh and, you know, certainly would generate some revenue. So a nice way to bring the community into the space cuz I guess, you know, naturally, if you live in Swanscott, you don't really need to. You don't need a hotel room in Swanscott, right? So it's a way to get into the, into the space.
Great.
So this is the top floor of the main building, the annex is now topped out, you know, that'll, the roof of that will be mechanicals, solar panels. And then the only real difference here on the third floor is these proposed hotel rooms all have these kind of very big terraces that are already there on the roof of the, of the gymnasium. So just to, to finish that out, then you have three nice sized guest rooms here with three very big terraces overlooking the park.
Great view, I'm sure.
Yeah, no, it's a beautiful view from up there, then the best view in the house is of course the roof. So we had tooled around with having a full. Kind of a four season, you know, fully enclosed space on the roof. You know, with, uh again, the added park requirement would be significant to have to, you know, park a full um enclosed space up there. And given that we already have a natural ballroom and the conversion of the gymnasium, that's a. Appropriate size for a hotel with this many room keys. We decided to just have a much more simple rooftop amenity deck, you know, just with bathrooms, it can be serviced by a mobile bar. Nothing really permanent. And it'll reopen, you know, to hotel guests, uh it can also be rented out, you know, for private events, parties, what have you. But really, nice big open space, again, these seating plans are here to show you, you know, how it could be laid out. But a nice big Cecil deck, and that's, you know, that's, keep it pretty simple. These areas are likely gonna be mechanicals, those aren't, there's not a bad view from the roof, but the view overlooking. Uh the bay down to the Boston skyline is of course the best, so we wanted to focus all the best views. Facing that direction and then again, kind of burying the bathrooms in the back corner away from the site corridors. Uh and close to the elevators as well.
I'm assuming this is all uncovered on the roof?
All uncovered, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, could we have some, you know, umbrellas, you know, maybe a, a light pergola system.
Sure.
To provide some shade, yeah, but nothing really permanent as proposed.
Understood, okay. And all of the utilities for heating and cooling and such would be located on the two roof areas here?
I mean, you can see there's plenty of, you know, room here or here to, for mechanicals, I think there's something that's gonna, needs to be on the, on the ground kind of back here. The lion's share of it. And be out of sight, out of mind. You know, with some, with some plantings, uh and bordering around, so you don't really see it when you're, when you're up on the roof.
As far as utilities, what's the, uh, I know it's a historic building, so I'm not sure what you're able or not able to do, but what's the plan for um heating, cooling, et cetera?
What we're thinking of doing is kind of largely, you know, heat pump driven, electrical heat pumps, you know, we do have solar. Given that it is in a northern climate, we might need to have some sort of um supplemental, you know, heating. Uh you know, for January, February when it gets very cold, but. And given that it's gonna be a, a brand new building on the interior with newer windows, fully insulated windows, um it's gonna be a much tighter building than it is now. You know, we'll see what we can kind of get away with.
But the plan is all electric heat pumps?
If we can, uh that's what we're gonna try and. If we can, uh, that's what we're gonna try to go for, yeah.
Nice. Okay.
Dixon, I have a couple of questions. Um, I do not have a scale with me. I'm using my thumb on these drawings. The location of the stairs on the roof don't appear to align with the stairs underneath them.
You're talking about these stairs, these stairs over here?
Yes. They're, they're actually pulled further away from the parapet when I'm looking at them. So if I look at the third-floor plan and then I look at this, there's a little bit of discrepancy. Because this, where the third floor, see where the up and down are there?
Yeah.
That up would be going up the stairs to that. And then if you go over here, that up is not in the same location.
Yeah, I, I remember going through this with our architect, and he, it did, there was some creative, um, adjustments to how that all bleeds up to the roof. I can't exactly speak to it right now, but he could certainly answer the questions. It was, it took some um, it took some time to have it, to work out. I remember him, uh.
The, the only, the only quite concern I have is what's drawn doesn't appear to be accurate. So it would be, it, that, that tower should probably be closer to the parapet on the left-hand side of the building than where it's drawn.
Yeah, I can ask him and then.
Yeah.
Get some clarity on it for you.
And then the, the other question I have is back on the roof plan. Um, there's, there's spaces here. There's that, I'm thinking it's saying circulation out, um, yes, circulation. Then there's a curb. Is that a planted roof? Is that what I'm reading here? New rooftop planter construction? Is that basically a green roof?
It, it can't be a fully green roof. Um, you know, plants are actually quite heavy.
Yeah.
A pound or square foot standpoint, so it can't all be planted. Will there be plantings to screen in, uh, you know, the mechanicals? Uh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, because the way this is, this is reading, um, based on the notes, it appeared to be a green roof. And then I did have a question. One of the things that, um, everything is looking, looking really good. I, I'm loving the way you're using space inside. I think the solutions around the guestrooms are really terrific. The one thing that stands out a little bit to me, though, is the, the bathrooms that are on the roof. Their location, and I'm curious, was there any consideration of that left-hand stair, stair tower? Right now, there's basically three towers on here. One is the circulation penthouse. One is the actual circulation tower with the elevators. And then the third is really that bathroom that is windowless and, and covered. And what strikes me with that and what, what concerns me, you had mentioned it would be behind trees, but, um, realistically, those trees are quite old, and they won't be, they're, they're not a reliable source of screening. Um, one of the things that I was wondering was, would there be more logic in having those attached to the stair tower itself that's on the left? So you had two elements that were up on the roof instead of three. Um, the other thing that, that sort of stands out, I mean, my concern on it is the fact that right now the Hadley faces the town square. It faces Lynn Scott Park. It faces Town Hall, the whole thing. Um, and it's a, it's, it's a pretty prominent view, and I'm incredibly excited to see the building renovated and really to be something really positive. But there's quite a bit of symmetry to that side of the building, that that extension of the, the bathrooms there right on the parapet wall, um, it really seems to sort of mess with it. And even though it is the back of the hotel, it is the front of the town. Um, so I, I would really love to see that evaluated, so it's also a high-massing adjacent to that elevator tower. Um, and I think if the elevator tower were standing alone and, and treated as an object, and that was pulled away from it. It would make for a much cleaner, uh, view of the building.
Yeah, no, it's, uh, I hear, I certainly hear what you're saying. Our, our objective was to try and maximize the amount of open space with the best views on the roof. So you can see, if you kind of take, you know, you know, this amount of space and add it, you know, somewhere on here. You're just kind of taking away from some of the best views, but I, I hear you that, you know, from the, if you're standing right in, um, Monument, kind of looking at the building, you know, this will be visible at some point when those old trees move on.
Yeah, and, and all winter too, because those are all, all deciduous. Um, I would, I would think you could think about view lines and tuck that behind, because currently that stair tower that is on the outdoor terrace. Um, the views are if, if the, if the restroom were narrowed down, I think you could place it and still maintain your views pretty easily.
Yeah, it's, given how large of the, the space is. Um, it's hard to shrink. I think these are as few a bathroom count as we can have, as small bathrooms we can have.
Right.
You know, per code. So it's tough to shrink them.
No, no, I'm not suggesting shrinking them, but I, I do think that you are already blocking the view with that one piece. Um, and I, I don't know, that's, that's the area I would really like to see explored, um, if that was a possibility. And the other, um, the other possibility is since that tower does not have access. This is a two-sided elevator, but they can be programmed, so the doors don't actually open on both sides. Um, so there could be a look at that. There is a lot of space. I'm, I'm believing that the elevator that's on the top on this drawing, the door next to it is leading you into the downstairs, correct? So the back section on either side of that elevator tower, um, is really dead-end circulation. You wouldn't have both doors open on those elevators. You'd only be using the doors that were facing the deck.
On this floor, yeah.
On that floor. So where it says elevator rooftop main, all of that space that's there is dead circulation, because you would only be using, or you could only use the door on one side of each of those elevators. And you could gain that space and actually, uh, potentially find a way to get some of the services into that tower. I don't know if that made sense the way I said that.
No, I hear, I, I'm just.
Because everywhere else you have that condition, where this is connecting into the annex. You need that space to be able to step down and change the elevation.
Yeah, no, I hear you. I'm just kind of thinking about what could be, I mean, it's too narrow for the bathrooms. I don't know, we can look at it. Listen, I, I hear you loud and clear on aesthetics of, of the view.
But the, but the other thing that I'm wondering is, could you put bathroom, like, could you handle some of the bathrooms there? And some of the bathrooms just by enlarging the, uh, the front staircase? Then you would have bathrooms attached to the circulation to the roof on each end. Um, without having an oversized tower that was out on the outdoor terrace. And then you would pull that whole element down to a, to a single freestanding element and the single element on the roof.
Um, no, that's certainly a, a thought, actually. We haven't, um, we know we just wanted to kind of keep it out of sight, out of mind from the entry, but I hear you, there's no kind of front and back to this building since they're both very public-facing, you know, signs.
This is a really, because, and, and it is pretty amazing, because the side where you've got the outdoor patio, when you drive into Swamp Scott. That's a great view of, of the building too. You get this sort of on-angle, but, um, it's a for this building to be, um, renovated and sort of made into a, uh, just a, a really attractive structure, there's some beautiful sightlines to it. So it's a, it's a nice project to do, um, and to see that happen.
Also nowhere to hide. You gotta put the, um, services in the bathroom somewhere.
Yes, you do, you do. That's true.
Uh, but now, listen, um, a point taken. I think that is, uh, something that is worth looking into. Um, so thank you for that.
You say you're considering solar panels? Is that on the roof of the annex?
Roof of the annex, yeah.
And on the first floor, you had mentioned outside the restaurant, that dining terrace, it, you had shown it full-length, I guess, for the footprint of the building, for lack of a better description.
Yeah.
Pending, potentially adding a few parking spaces there that might eat into the terrace. What's the, what's the decision-making there? Is that just based on what the final key count ends up being, or?
Yeah, I mean, we know parking is, it's tough in town, right?
Yes.
Um, you don't need me to tell you that?
Yeah.
If we can claw back a few more spaces, uh, and again, try and open up that, that view corridor as you are kind of pulling into, to town coming up to Lynn. Um, you know, looking over the park, looking over down to the water through the trees, it's actually kind of a beautiful setting there. It's a great view for the dumpster right now, uh, but it'd be an even nicer place to have some outdoor seating. So, again, if we can get a few more spaces in this area, um.
Hopefully you won't have to.
Right.
Yeah, because I do, I do think.
Well, there is just very, there is very little landscaping on our, on this property. I mean, luckily, we're next to a beautiful park, so we don't have to have landscaping on our property, but nevertheless, you know, it's nice to, uh, to have something. But unfortunately, we just don't have as much room to play with.
Yep.
Um, the, uh, the section between the angled parking and Reddington Street has traditionally had a nice tree scape. Um, and it would be nice to figure out if that could be retained right along that, along the front of the cars there. Um, especially with angle parking, because those can be done sawtooth instead of as a straight line, since cars sawtooth when you park them at an angle.
Yeah.
So there, that would be a, a very welcome place to get some green in. Um, this is a, this is a silly thing, because I just can't stop looking at it. On the, on the title block, uh, Swamp Scott is misspelled. It's swamp, swapmescot.
Where?
Uh, look, on the right-hand side, where it says project, it says Delamar Swapmescot.
Right under.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
That's from our architect. That's not from me, so.
No, no, it's definitely from your architect. I want you to bring things back to your architect. But it is funny, because my eye keeps hitting it.
Any, uh, I know, it's a big project, so probably still digesting. Any other comments, questions from the board for, for, uh, Dixon?
I'm just so excited that this is happening, and, um, I, you know, I have nothing but good things to say. I'm really very happy about it, so, thank you.
No, thank you. We're, uh, we're equally excited.
Yeah, and Dixon, thanks for making an appearance here before us tonight. I, it wasn't needed, but it's greatly appreciated. Um, and very helpful to have you kind of walk us through not only the schematics, but also the design, the intent, and the programmatic reasons for it, once you get into operations. I think everyone in town is waiting with bated breath. Um, so having you be able to walk through the logic behind some of the decisions is, is helpful.
Yeah, and on the, some of the technicality stuff, um, again, I'm happy to answer some of those questions that I can't answer tonight. Um, we'll get them in front of our, our development team, so.
The, uh, your renderings are really helpful to sort of see the, the spirit of, of what you're doing. Um, and I apologize for all of sort of the design things that I keep bringing up. But one of the things that I, I will point out is with the, the window shown with white, and of course, with the, uh, the trim and the banding that's very prominent on this building, um, I think it could be really interesting to think of that tower relating to that whiteness. Um, and really letting, yeah, so that that's shown in black. I almost feel if that was a white tower in there that related to the stone, or whatever color the stone became. Um, it might feel much more integrated, where right now it does feel a little bit, um, foreign to the building. I think that the, the tower on the roof, if you look at the elevation that you show, or the rendering you showed from the
Here.
That one, that gives you an idea of like that really clean New England white against the red brick, um, is quite striking. And then, then the, uh, I'm, I'm intrigued by the copper flashing that was repaired, being retained, and I really sort of like it. It lets it stand out a little bit more, where that becomes the third element instead of the brick becoming the fourth element.
Yeah. What I will say, and I can't say this definitively, but, um, since this is a, we're going for historic tax credits on this project, so maintaining the facade, maintaining, you know, as much of the interiors as is practical. They will want you to have the, any new construction kind of be a stark contrast to the original two buildings. In this case, they're both historic.
Yeah.
The annex and the main building, so, um, actually.
But that's why I would suggest something in, in
My computer.
In a, in a white, or in a light color like that, where it's not a different brick.
Yeah.
Because it sort of looks like it's being, being proposed in a, in a black brick. And, uh, I really think doing something and thinking about that material, no one would ever think that that was, uh, that was part of the original building, um, because everything is brick.
Yeah, uh, maybe I forgot to mention it earlier, but this is really done for just kind of massing to show the size and scale of the construction.
I'm giving some, I'm giving some reaction to that, though, in, in the sense of that. And the other thing that, that, um, would be nice to see is some, some coverage, outdoor coverage in front of that entrance. So that, that is the handicapped entrance, but it's, it's someplace that people can be standing in the rain as they're waiting for their, their cab or something. Because that is something that's building, you know, some sort of awning in that, um, which would, uh, make it more functional, but also not have it be as flat as it's reading.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a beautiful project.
Hope so.
Hope so. I, I have to tell you, I'm thrilled to see the accessibility tower that for years we were told there was no way to do, um, very clearly illustrated. Because it's part of the, it's part of the reason the school is no longer a school. And, uh, there were many voices saying there was no way to make it accessible, and, uh, there were a few voices saying there's a very easy way to do it, and it's basically exactly what you've drawn.
Oh.
So it's great, it's great to see it.
It is tricky, but, I mean, you're just gonna have a lot of little, you know, stops on the elevator, but.
It, it's, it's funny, if you, in, if you ever go to the MFA in Boston, the Museum of Fine Arts, um, this exact situation happens between two additions on the building. And, uh, and it's really a charming moment when you, when you, when it's done well. Um, so it's sort of fun.
I mean, as a complete aside, I mean, I, I think, given that it's not, you know, that tall of a building. Uh, when this stairwell gets renovated, uh, and again, those windows are kind of blocked out and kind of glazed over. Uh, but you're gonna have fantastic views, kind of looking out.
Oh, using, using those staircases, it's gonna be fantastic.
Yeah, because they're, I mean, they're very wide.
Will you be restoring the height in all the corridors also?
Yeah, I mean, there, there will be some drops for HVAC and mechanical, of course, but I think the lowest, the lowest ceiling height in the entire both buildings is something like eleven feet. I mean, it's, there's a lot of, a lot of.
No, it's a, it's a great old building.
A lot of height to work with, so that kind of helps you, you know, hide, you know, inevitably you need chases for everything, but, yeah.
So as we look to provide comments to our colleagues on the select board for this, um, what do we want to make sure we note here? I don't, I don't think there was a, an extensive amount of comments. I mean, this is a pretty thorough schematic design that looks very nice. As far as comments to the select board, Krista, do you want to notate what you have, what you've recorded so far, and we can?
Yes, I'm going to share my screen really quick. These are by no means refined.
Yeah, all good.
But first, we had explore parking lot lighting to make the lighting low level in height, so that surfaces are lit, but not the sky. To reduce impact to neighbors, um, bicycle parking being noted on the plan. Um, the stairs from the third-floor plan do not align with the stairs. The stairs from the third floor plan do not align with the stairs shown on the roof plan. This is all one comment about the potential in attaching the bathrooms to the stair element and the dead space behind the elevators in that tower to potentially go from three towers on the roof to two. So there's going to be some wordsmithing on this, but that was.
You get the intent.
The general.
Yep.
Idea of that, and then the comment to think of ha- having the tower relate to the whiteness of the banding rather than dark black brick, as well as night, just nice to see some outdoor coverage in front of the tower entrance, like an awning, to make it more functional.
And this is a little outside of schematic, but I think Jared's comments a moment ago about the angled parking area where the compact cars are noted, finding if trees and shrubbery and plantings could be maintained there?
So that's sawtoothing the curb line?
Sawtoothing the parking, right. I think that was a well put comment.
It's also, it's also nice if you ever have to do angle parking if it's done that way, because I never can tell where the front of my, when I'm about to like leave my car sticking out too far, et cetera.
I just think the, yeah, I, it's probably more positive things to, to, we could list that would have you writing all night, Krista, but I, I think these are great, they're great comments.
Yeah, I, I, I'm hoping that you're hearing positive from me, because my, my overall feeling is very positive on this.
Me too, me too.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm pulling up a lot of things. I, I spend a lot of time doing, doing architectural review in a university, so I, I unfortunately am sort of wired this way, but it's, it's hopefully to make things better.
No, and I mean, even the plan that we submitted for our RFP, I mean, you can see not a lot has changed, and even when we started really digging into it, I think that it, it, the building, buildings lay out pretty well, I mean, for a 60-key hotel, which was the most allowed in the zone. Again, it's going to be much harder than making it sound, but we feel good about, yeah, this program that we, we have here.
Well, I'm excited about how beautiful those rooms will be.
Yeah, those are large rooms. Those are.
They're large rooms, the ceiling height is lovely, incredibly generous windows, and they're really thoughtfully laid out. Will you be retaining any el- like, is it your intent, I, I was thrilled to hear that you're thinking of restoring the auditorium in the way you are, and are you thinking of retaining any of the classroom aspects with the, you know, the, the big old slate boards and all of the, the things in there? I know that they're, they've, they've never, never not been used until this year, but I was curious if that was part of your interior design scheme?
Some of the, well, for example, some of the flooring in the classrooms in the main building, you know, some of them are kind of too far gone. The wood is warped, you know, ripped up, but some of them are actually in quite good shape, albeit having, you had many layers of, you know, lacquer put on over the years, but if they get refinished and polished, they're kind of beautiful hardwood floors, so that will be on a kind of room-by-room basis, I guess. In terms of other elements of the interior, I mean, the, you know, the terrazzo floor in the hallways, no reason to touch that, you know, cleaning up the stairwells, as we talked about. Now, there's, I mean, our intent is to kind of celebrate the fact that this was a school and not kind of shy away, where there are some quirky areas that might be, you know, odd, because it's a school. You know, of course, it's going to be a luxury, you know, hopefully a luxury offering, but we're going to be celebrating the fact it's a school, not, you know, trying to make it look like a, a cookie cutter hotel inside of a, a brick building envelope.
Next, next time you're up here, in Salem, there has been a school renovation that's right near the Hawthorne Hotel.
Yep.
And it's a Catholic school that has been, we've been watching this being done, and it's just such an example of the bringing back of the windows and, and so forth. It's, it's really stunning to see it.
What's it called?
Oh, what is it called?
Oh, Hawthorne, it has the word Hawthorne. It's, it is adjacent to a church, and I believe it's not Hawthorne.
It's next to the Hawthorne Hotel?
It's, it's on the same block as the Hawthorne Hotel, so if you sort of Google map it, and you're facing the front door of the Hawthorne, it's a block down on the same side of the street. But it's, it's a, it's a newer building, but the form is very similar. It's a 1904, I was shocked when I saw this, it's a 1940 building.
Yeah.
But they were building it really similar style to this one.
It's 13 Hawthorne Boulevard, is the address.
Yeah, it's a church of school.
Okay.
My parents got married in a church.
And they, they have a wing off the back that I believe was the gymnasium, and that looks like they're retaining, they didn't turn it into apartments, and if you drive it back.
It's becoming condos, right? Is that what it's becoming?
Apartments, actually, yeah, yeah.
Nice.
But it's a, it's a beautiful example.
They're called the Hawthorne Lofts.
The Hawthorne Lofts?
Yeah.
Yeah. Helps having a Salem zoning board member here.
Yeah.
Any other comments we want to provide to, to Dixon? I think this was incredibly helpful, having not really heard much about the hotel from a planning perspective since we approved the zoning four, three years ago, so it's really nice to have you here and present this. This has been really valuable.
Very exciting to see it coming to fruition, and such a beautiful job.
Thank you.
Do you, do you have a scheduled goal for opening?
No. I won't, I won't speak to that here.
That's fine. I know I'm going to be.
Honesty is key.
Because we can give you a January.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. That's what we're selling tonight.
Beautiful.
Well, I know we're all eager for that to happen as soon as you're able to make it work, so. I think with, without any further comments from the board, I think we've got the comments that we provided to Krista. We can clean those up, and if anyone has any additional comments between now and, I believe we're sending them to the select board next week, I want to say, so any other comments, send, feel free to send directly to Krista, and we can incorporate them into our note.
Yeah, I would say if you could get those to me within the next day or so, we're hoping to get these comments to the town administrator's office as soon as possible to get posted for the select board to review, so.
Great, perfect. All right, with that, thank you Dixon, appreciate you coming.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to see you, sir.
Have a nice day.
Dixon, Dixon, can you indulge us for one more moment?
Sure.
We do have a member of the public who would like to be heard on this, so I would.
Yeah.
Welcome, welcome their comment.
Thank you, I appreciate being heard. Mara Lau, Outlook Road. Dixon, just a couple of things that I'd love to say to the board that were said at the public meeting, so that they get included and not overlooked, would be along the, you know, on the Reddington side, so both sides, the parking lot, screening in the parking lot for lights was definitely a huge part of that meeting, so I certainly want to make sure that that gets locked in and, and is not overlooked. I think rat mitigation was definitely a piece, so I don't think it can be said enough. We are experiencing, like in many communities, you know, a, a rat problem, and, and I think that the construction will really, you know, create some difficulties to the, to the neighbors, so we want to, you know, just be mindful of that, and mitigating and planning ahead for that. I do know that one person indicated some concerns about the trucks. I think somebody did bring it up here this evening in terms of drop off and sort of, you know, for services at the back, so, you know, just being mindful that there's enough turnaround. Yeah, definitely, that seemed pretty tight against that, that stone wall, to, to me certainly, but I'm just sort of mindful of that. I'm just trying to go through the list of things that were brought up that evening, and, and, you know, I do think that Lynn Scott will need some attention, and so this is, you know, our last town property that is being given over for this, and, you know, I think that, that, you know, from a pilot perspective, we're, we're, we're giving plenty. I think that it would be great if, if you and your team could consider giving Lynn Scott Park a real heavy refresh, and so that could be, you know, part of our conversations down the road. That is a park that we, you know, is forever land for our town, which we appreciate. You know, there were, there were a whole lot of cars on it this weekend, you know, with, with the, the auto, kind of classic car fair. Yeah, the classic car fair was there, so, you know, there's, there's a bit more of a give and take. Not all, I'm sorry Ted, but not all citizens who pay plenty of taxes as well in town are in favor of this project at all, and I am making it very clear, and have made it very clear for, you know, years, that I am not at all in favor of this. And we did vote on a public space in the, there, so we'll have to be having further discussions about that as well. But just real quick, I, I, you know, from a logistics standpoint, I was a little concerned that the basement actually didn't line up for your elevator, so the basement on the main level, so just be, kind of take a look at that, too, since Jared and I know the building so well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mara.
Thank you.
Mara, when you said the basement doesn't line up, what do you mean?
The main building from the elevator.
For ADA access. It would have to, I think because the, the breezeway was on a higher plane, right, and you would have to go down, so unless, unless you're digging down, it'd have to be significantly.
We're digging down.
Just digging down.
They're digging, they're digging down, so they've made the entire thing accessible, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
So the digging down is really going to change, it's really going to change than the extension, right, it's going to change the kindergarten wing. Can't think of the name of the.
There, basically that, that breezeway is being removed, and this tower is being placed there, so it will go down into the ground so that it has this ability to be accessed from an elevator that stops on half floors, or not even half floors, like quarter floors.
So it'll change the grade, too, entirely.
That, if you, that area is, the grade's all weak.
I know, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it'll, it'll just sort of normalize the grade, but they, they, they've, their plan is making it fully accessible, which is.
And then the other thing that I brought up, which was the walkway, I really think that the walkway coming through Lynn Scott, and having an opening so that people can get from that side of town, cross the property safely, like similar to, you know, the, your residents, or, you know, your, your patrons would be crossing the property, it's just so that it's not locked off from the Elmwood side of Lynn Scott Park. I just think it really does, you know, the foot traffic, a tremendous amount of disservice. I think that the idea of adding bikes somewhere in there, or bike, you know, locking storage, or blue bikes maybe even, is fantastic. I think that's a, that's a good add. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I was remiss calling for a public comment, and I think we also have members online. If there's anyone online who wants to make a public comment, they can feel free to raise their hand and indicate. All right, seeing none. Dixon, thank you for hanging around for, for a few minutes, appreciate it.
Dixon, I do have one more question on this, on the site plan. What is, with the parking lot, I know that this is just a proposed site plan, but there's no, there are no elevation lines. Is the idea that, that this will be leveled and then retaining walls put in, or what's the, what's the plan? Because that's got a significant slope up to the rear right corner.
Yeah, and we talked about this, well, again, in the public hearing with the, the neighbor who was in attendance, I'm forgetting their name, but there will need to be a retaining wall kind of dug into that, you know, far right of the plan, if you're looking at it.
Yeah.
To allow for, you know, that parking, because that slope does, as you correctly point out, does.
So that would, that would pull the parking out of line with site a little bit more, too.
I guess it would be level, it would just be kind of brought down modestly.
Right, right.
On that far end of the property.
Okay.
And one last question for me. I'm noticing your heights here, just a couple inches below what the dimensionality is for the overlay district. Is that height measured, where is that measured to? Is that the midpoint of the new structure there, the roof on there?
Which, what measure do you want to have?
Sixty-four feet, 10 inches for the height, proposed height? Existing of 52 feet, 4 inches, so I'm assuming it's that new access ADA tower at the elevator?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, got it.
Ted, I, I think that was also specified in the RFP, but I did, I have to go back and check. And we created different, there were some unique, not necessarily unique, most of them, you know, everything's pretty compliant, but we may have included the fact that existing height on the building is indeed higher than other zoning, so there was the understanding that the building would remain, and there would be, there would be other pergences on the roof that may extend it, so that was, I can't remember the exact verbiage, but it was in the RFP.
Yeah, no, that was my recollection as well. I'm just note, noting that the proposed is six, is two inches.
Yeah.
Two inches below what the zoning mandate, so I just want to make sure we're, you know, all the bricks are laid evenly, so you're not one inch, two inches too high, you know what I'm saying? Anyway, looks great. Really appreciate you coming tonight. Any other questions before I tell Dixon he can sign off for the fourth time tonight? Dixon, thank you again.
Great.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
Thank you all very much.
Have a nice day.
Thank you, you too. I believe that concludes everything that we had on our agenda. Is that right? I don't have a copy in front of me, so, ad libbing.
So, we did have agenda number five, which was review and discussion of potential changes to the Swamp Scott zoning bylaw. We do not have much of an update for that right now, but I do anticipate having an update with best practices for both signage and expanded multifamily use zoning for November.
Perfect. I think you had shared with me that there were some GIS updates that you.
Yes, so, yeah, some exciting updates. We have GIS licenses for both Tim, our new, well, first exciting update, we have hired a new land use planner, his name's Tim Milliken in our office, which is very exciting, and he and I have both obtained GIS licenses, so we will be able to do GIS analysis, as well as just map making and visualization for purposes of planning for the town. So we're very excited about that, and there is, I know, some parcel size analysis that we plan to do for the expanded multifamily use zoning that we talked about last month, so that is on our list of things to do. We are currently just getting all of the data we can together, so we have a few things to set up before we can get crunching in, into analysis, but we will have updates at the November meeting, so I kept that, this on the agenda for right now, but that's the only updates we have right now.
Thank you. I think that audit of lot sizes is something I know we've kind of talked about in theory for like, since I've been on the board at least, so for at least almost five years, so I think having that will be really informative. Only other updates I have to share is our colleagues on the tree committee, I believe, had a bylaw that they had shared with Krista and, and myself, so I looked at it at cursory level, but I offered them the opportunity to do the same things that our friends on the renewable energy committee did, or resilient Swamp Scott did last month or two months ago, for comments and feedback from planning, so that, that may come before us in November, but just wanted to give everyone a heads up on that. All right, I think with that, I can entertain a motion to adjourn unless there's any other new business to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, let's do a roll call. Angela, Ibelito.
Hi.
Joe Chariden.
Hi, hi.
Phil Quinn.
Hi.
Jared Jeremiah.
Hi.
Ted Dooly.
Hi.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.